Council, we've started the recording.
Recording in progress.
That one's not quite there yet. Good evening. We will call the special meeting for the Auburn City Council for June 26, 2023 to order. We will begin with a land acknowledgement. We would like to acknowledge the federally recognized Muckleshoot Indian Tribe, the ancestral keepers of the land we are gathered on today. We thank them for their immense contributions to our state and local history, culture, economy, and identity as Washingtonians. Tonight, the Auburn Special City Council meeting will be held both in person and virtually. And now if you will please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. And Hannah, will you please call roll?
Deputy Mayor J. Raj.
I'm here.
Councilmember Baggett.
Here.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Excused.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Malinga.
Here.
Councilmember Rakes.
Here.
Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Here.
Thank you. And Hannah, I'm going to go a little bit out of order here and go to agenda modifications and ask you for any agenda modifications this evening.
We will be removing the appointment of Patricia Amad- Amadio to the Auburn Junior City Council. We will also be removing unfinished business and new business from the agenda. And a complete copy of the inter-local agreement that is related to Resolution 5723 has been provided to council.
Thank you, Hannah. And now we will move to announcements, proclamations, and presentations. First on the agenda is Capitol Project Status Report and Feature Project from Director Galb's group.
Yes, and we have Jeff Bender, who is our Senior Project Engineer, and Seth Wickstrom, one of our project engineers, to give you that report and talk about our Coal Creek Springs project.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. This evening, we have the pleasure of presenting to you guys the Capitol Project Status Update, as well as the Feature Project for the summer issue of the Auburn Magazine. My name is Jeffrey Bender, and this is Seth Wickstrom. So currently, in the Capitol Project Group, we are actively managing 34 projects. The project total for these projects is approximately $87 million. Of those projects, 28 of them are in the design phase with a approximate project total value of $74.5 million, and six of them are in construction with an approximate value of $12.5 million. Want to note that these project values are spread out amongst multiple budgeting seasons or budgeting years, not all just for 2023. There have been a few changes or updates since this has been prepared for the council packets. We've had one project that we were able to complete closeout and get that off of our project list. That would have been the Fourth Street project that we completed last summer and got striped this spring. We've had three projects moved from design into construction, and three projects moved off of the planning phase into design to be moved into our active design phase. So we now have a total of 36 projects being managed. There's a few projects I'd like to highlight for you guys that will be starting construction soon. The first project here is CP 2233. That is the arterial preservation project. This project is on page three of the CPS report, which can be found on page eight of your council packet. This project's location is primarily on Eighth Street between, Eighth Street Northeast between M Street Northeast and R Street Northeast, with a little bit of work being done out at the airport. This project will replace several cracked and failing sections of the concrete panels on Eighth Street, and we will be crack sealing multiple streets throughout the city, as well as the airport taxiway. Construction of this project is anticipated to start next month, so July of 2023. The next project I'd like to highlight for you guys is CP 2213, which is the runway and taxiway improvement and runway safety area grading. This project can be found on page 11 of your CPS report, which is page 16 in your council packets. This project will rehabilitate the runway and taxiway pavements out at the airport. We will be upgrading the taxiway lighting, and we will be updating the runway lighting. For this project to be completed, we are anticipating a 30-day closure of the runway, basically for the airport itself, basically closing the runway down so the work can be done. And construction for this project is anticipated to start in August of '23. We are really close to awarding the project and just waiting on some official documents from FAA. The last project I'd like to update for you guys is, or highlight for you guys, is CP 2231. This is the Lake Tap-Sumner Tap's Preservation Project. As you can see on the map here in the slide, this project is going to do a grind and overlay for a good portion of Lake Tap's Parkway and continuing down Sumner Tap's Highway East. So we'll have some asphalt restoration. We'll be doing some replacement of some broken curb gutter and sidewalks. We'll also be replacing and installing curb ramps that don't meet ADA or are missing that need to be installed to meet ADA compliance. Also, we will be rechanalizing the project, or rechanalizing the area, putting new channelization down and pavement markings. Construction for this project is anticipated to start in September of 2023. We are currently working with WashDOT to get our construction funding approved, so we can go out for advertisement. Do you guys have any questions on the Capitol Project Report that was provided?
Council, any questions? Councilmember Trout Manuel.
I just have a question on the cost. You said you have $1479 from federal grants. What's the remaining cost?
$1479 from federal grants.
You have $1,479,356. It's on the first line. Current budget, that's what your budget? And how much money do you think that we'll receive from the federal grants?
For the airport?
Yes. For, no, the Lake Tap, your Lake Tap, 2231, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Okay, yes. We should be getting that full amount.
Full amount. That will cover everything.
I believe that is correct, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So I'd like to provide a clarification there. So the preservation grants are 50% grant, so we get about 50% of the cost from the federal grant. 50% of the cost comes from our preservation funds.
Okay, so it'll all be covered then?
Yes, it's all, it's all covered. It's, but it's partially federal, partially our 105 preservation funds.
Okay, thank you very much.
Are there any other questions? If not, thank you. Move on and let Seth take over.
Hi, my name's Seth Wickstrom. I'm a project engineer at the City Auburn. I'm here to talk about the Coal Creek Springs Transmission Main Repair Project. This will be the featured Capitol Project in the summer 2023 Auburn Magazine. So Coal Creek Springs is the city's largest water source. It's located on the south side of the city at the very end of Stock River Drive. And then there's a 24-inch pipe or transmission main that goes for about two miles to the north and connects Coal Creek Springs to the city's treatment facilities on Howard Road. This transmission main was built in the 1920s, and most of it was replaced in the 1960s, except for a portion shown in the picture here. So this is an aerial photo. It shows Game Farm Park on the left and Game Farm Wilderness Park on the right, and then the river coming through, that's the White River. And the pipe in purple, basically just on the west bank of the river, then it goes into Game Farm Wilderness Park, that's about 870 feet of pipe that was never replaced in the 1960s. So that pipe's about 100 years old. And then the purpose of this project is to replace the pipe shown in the red box there, basically the section of pipe under the river. And the reason we chose to replace this pipe is because if it, if it breaks, it'll be really difficult or maybe impossible to repair since it's under the river. And then the photo here, this is a photo of the actual 100-year-old pipe. You can see it's just a two-foot-wide diameter steel pipe. Obviously, this isn't the piece under, under the river. This was, we excavated in Game Farm Wilderness Park to, in 2017, to install a valve and do some exploratory camera work. So that's what this picture is of. And so to replace the pipe under the river, we looked at numerous alternatives. They're listed here. Alternatives included drilling a new pipe underneath the river, basically damming portions of the river, and digging a trench along the river bottom and installing a pipe, lining the existing pipe, essentially installing a slightly smaller pipe in the old pipe, and installing a utility bridge over the river. Ultimately, we determined the utility bridge was the most viable options. The other options were either too difficult or impossible to construct. And in the case of the pipelining, the pipe would get slightly smaller and couldn't meet our future capacity needs for our water system. Then we also worked with many government agencies during the alternative analysis and the permitting of the bridge. And they definitely helped us design the project to minimize the environmental impacts, since we'll be impacting some of the shoreline along the river. The photo here is of a similar bridge to the one we plan to install. There's, there's a couple differences. One is the abutments, which are those tan concrete pillars at the end of the bridge. Ours were, ours will look different from that. They'll be, they'll be simpler and smaller. And then I'm not sure what the size of this bridge is, but our, I, it looks like our bridge will be slightly narrower, at least it will look narrower. Sorry, the decking will look narrower, the deck will be slightly narrower, and the rails will stick out a little bit. But other than that, it looks really similar to the one we planned to install. And then, since this bridge is going to be built between two parks, Game Farm and Game Farm Wilderness, we also thought it was a good opportunity to connect the pedestrian facilities in the two parks. So there'll be pedestrian decking on the top of the bridge, and then the new water main will hang, the new transmission main will hang underneath it. And there's also room underneath for future utilities if we need to, to cross the river. And then, and then to, as, as part of the work to minimize environmental impacts, any trees that are disturbed, any vegetation or trees that are disturbed along the shoreline during construction will be replanted with new trees and native vegetation. And any large trees that are removed by the project will actually be taken and installed on the shoreline about a mile upriver on a separate site to create fish habitat. The total budget for this project is about $5.3 million. $210,000 is coming from parks to fund the, the trails and partially fund the decking for the bridge. The water fund is contributing about $1.2 million, and then the remainder is coming from a drinking water state revolving fund loan. It's a low-interest federal loan that'll be repaid by the City Water Fund. The design for this project is actually complete. We're currently bidding the project. So we started advertising this month. We'll finish bidding the project and award the project in July, and we anticipate construction will start in August this year and be complete in fall of next year. And that is the whole presentation. Does anyone have any questions?
Council, any questions? I don't see any.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the Storm Drainage Comprehensive Plan Update.
All right. Good evening, council. For the record, I am Ryan Bondrack, Utilities Engineering Manager. We also have with us tonight Tim Karla, Storm Drainage Engineer. We are here to present and discuss a key component of the Storm Drainage Comprehensive Plan, the storm policies. Okay. Before we dive into the policies themselves, a quick overview of where we are at with respect to schedule of the Storm Comprehensive Plan Update. Back on April 10th, we presented a general overview of the Storm Comprehensive Plan and what it entails, which is a component of the overall city's comprehensive plan. And then tonight, we are presenting the policies as mentioned. And then later this year, we'll be coming back to council to present the draft Storm Drainage Comprehensive Plan and incorporate any comments that have been received on that plan. And then in 2024, we expect to present the final plan and then bring forward a resolution for council for adoption of that plan. So the policies in the Storm Drainage Comprehensive Plan have been reformatted and rearranged for how they have been shown in past comprehensive plans. This reformatting will demonstrate a more consistent and cohesive approach for how the policies are presented. The storm policies are grouped together under goal statements, and those goal statements are broad and indicate a general aim or purpose that is to be achieved. The policies themselves are topic-specific and indicate a clear commitment of the city. So this slide here shows what each of the policy statements look like. Clean version of the complete set of policies is shown in your packets, beginning on page 65 of your, of your packets there. An example shown on the screen, you have a goal statement that is specific to fiscal responsibility, and then the policy statement that is reflecting that specific goal. So now I'm going to turn it over to Tim, and he is going to give a brief introduction to the storm utility itself and then move into the policy discussion.
Thank you, Ryan. Good evening. The city's stormwater management programs are guided in large part by the Washington, Washington State Department of Ecology, National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Permit, also known as the NPDS Permit. The city's storm system is comprised of a series of pipes, channels, ponds, and vault to manage the stormwater. After collection, the stormwater flows directly to either the Green or the White Rivers. Mill or Bowman Creek, or in many cases infiltrates into the ground. And shown here is an underground vault with a cartridge filter, media treatment facility is typical of many that we have in the city. So the storm system is comprised of approximately 240 miles of pipe, 40 miles of ditches, 10,000 catch basins, 3,000-plus manholes, 167 stormwater pond, ponds, and seven pump stations located throughout the city. Our four main goal categories for the policies are systems planning, operations and maintenance, fiscal responsibility, and environmental and regional coordination. Since the format of the new policies, or the policies in the new plan is significantly different than the format of the last plan, for our discussion tonight, we will just highlight the changes that were made. Generally, we are not proposing to significantly change what we do, but mostly to better define what we do and why, and then improve on our current practices with these policies as a guide. There are additional policies with minor changes that we're not going to bring up tonight, but the intent remains the same. Significant changes from the previous plan include removed policies, new policies, policies that have been combined into one policy statement, or policies moved from other locations within the overall comprehensive plan, and policies with simplified language. As I go through the goals and policies, the CF numbers I will be referring to are those currently located in the Capitol Facilities Plan of the city's overall comprehensive plan, while the single-numbered policies are found in the current comprehensive storm drainage plan. So we're coming from the two areas, we're blending those together, then they're going to reside in the storm plan. We did not include those in the packet, as Ryan mentioned, and there is a clean version for your review. So I'm going to move on to the seven policies that we're proposing to remove, and I'll start with CF 43 and 44. It is not the current practice of the city to provide regional-scale stormwater facilities. There simply is not enough land available in the right locations to promote this policy, and therefore, we're proposing to delete it. CF 48 is really not a policy statement, and was written for alternative project ranking and selection for a previous storm drainage comprehensive plan, and is therefore not applicable to our current planning processes, and so it was removed. Regarding Policy 19, there is no longer a need to call out low-impact development, or LID specifically by name. It has been integrated into the Department of Storm, the Department of Ecology Stormwater Management Manual, which the city has been required to adopt by code. So it's already embedded into it. When we had this policy previously, it wasn't, so we had to have a special reference to it at that time. Policy 20 was too broad of a statement and did not specify whether fiscal or environmental responsibility or sustainability was being described, and so this policy was removed. The concept of sustainability is still part of our policies, and specifically environmental sustainability, which is addressed in Goal 4, Policies 4.3, 4.5, and 4.6, which we will cover shortly. For Policy 25, storm claims are too infrequent to make this a meaningful metric, so it was removed. Policy 27 was a broad statement pertaining to customer satisfaction, so it was also removed. The general intent of these policies was good, but instead, we created new policies 1.6 and 2.7 to address customer complaints and claims, which we will get to also shortly. So now we have six new policies, and I'll start with Goal 1. System policies, Policy 1.6 was added to replace/remove Policy 25. Policy 1.6 ensures all complaints and claims are reviewed and addressed as needed. Under Goal 2, Policy 2.2 was created because of a lack of detail in CF 40. Additional language was needed to specify that city departments that own and operate a storm system separate from the storm utility were responsible for their own maintenance. Policy 2.7 was added to replace/remove Policy 27, which addressed customer service. Policy 2.7 ensures all customer calls are electronically recorded and followed up in a timely manner. Under Goal 3, for Policy 3.7, grant funding will be sought and applied for as opportunities become available. Oh. I'm sorry. Oh, 3.2. Policy 3.2 was added to establish an efficient management of funds and create a basis for all fiscal response, policies to fall. Sorry, my apologies. I got caught up in my notes there. So 3.7, again, grant funding will be sought as opportunities arise or show themselves through various sources. And 3.8 minimizes maintenance costs by avoiding overly complicated designs, which also can increase maintenance responsibilities and costs. So now we have 10 combined policies. Under Goal 1, Policy 1.2 combines previous policies 3, 4, and 5, as they had identical introductory language, so they have been condensed into a bulleted format. This policy addresses managing stormwater runoff in a way to ensure access to critical services, preserves transportation routes, and protects real property. Policy 1.5 combines previous policies 8 and 9, which spoke to asset condition database and criticality database, which in practice are the same thing. Under Goal 2, Policies 7, 11, and 12 discuss maintenance responsibility of storm drainage infrastructure and are now combined to ensure maintenance activities are scheduled to meet our NPDS permit requirements. Under Goal 3, Policy 3.1, previous policies CF 39 and 41, or through 41, and Policy 23 and 24, discussing various aspects of rates and rate development, have been combined into a single policy. The new policy simply states that rate structures will be updated periodically, and funds gathered will be used for storm utility purposes. Previous policies CF 37 and 38 were too specific and detailed. With information better suited to design manuals, they are combined into a single policy, requiring new development to construct needed off-site improvements at the time of site development. For Policy 3.4, previous policies 2 and 10 dealing with asset management and replacement life cycles were combined into a single policy. Under Goal 4, previous policies CF 40 and Policy 21 relating to regional stormwater coordination were combined to form Policy 4.1. For Policy 4.2, previous policies 16 and 22 regarding compliance with federal, state, and county requirements to manage stormwater were also combined. For Policy 4.3, previous policies CF 45 and Policy 17 promoting the preservation of natural features were combined. For Policy 4.8, Policies 14 and 18 regarding federal, state, and county stormwater regulation compliance for new and redevelopment were combined into a single policy. So now we have nine simplified policies, starting with Goal 2. Previous Policy 13 regarding the management and maintenance accessibility of stormwater was simplified. was simplified. Previous Policy CF 42 regarding operations and maintenance was long and overly prescriptive. We simplified this policy, or we simplified this in a Policy 2.3, defining any drainage facility serving private property should be owned and maintained by the private property owner, and any facility serving the private, the public right-of-way should be served by the city, public system. Previous Policy 7 was split off and combined with others to become Policy 2.4, with the remaining portion captured here in 2.5, addressing maintenance responsibilities and schedule. Minor wording changes to Previous Policy 28 were made to create Policy 2.6 regarding the importance of employee safety. Under Goal 3, minor wording changes for clarity to Previous Policy 26 were made to create Policy 3.5 regarding capital project implementation. For Policies 3.6, we updated language to provide Policy CF, to Previous Policy CF 46 regarding the need to have overall project coordination, similar to Policies for the transportation and sanitary sewer. Under Goal 4, for Policy 4.4, we updated the language from Previous Policy CF 49 and removed the reference to the city's comprehensive plan, since it is now located in the storm drainage comprehensive plan, or will be located there. Minor wording revisions to Previous Policies CF 53, 53 were made to create Policy 4.5 seeking to minimize impact to the river system by providing pretreatment of surface flows from development and infiltration of groundwater where feasible. And finally, minor wording revisions to Previous Policies CF 52 were made to create Policy 4.7, which removed references to the Endangered Species Act, as our manuals now have that embedded in them and cover them. And so with that, questions?
Counsel, any questions? Councilmember Brown.
Thank you very much.
Your microphone.
Thank you very much. That's a great report, and you can see there's a lot of work went into that. I'm curious, how does the city, is there a way that we are looking at this through the equity lens in terms of, you know, making sure that we are providing equal service to all of our city? Is that, is that written into the policy in a way that helps us achieve those objectives?
I'm not so sure specifically by title or by reference. It mentions inclusion, but in terms of implementation, projects are born about need and not, you know, location, so we try to apply that equally, I guess, amongst and across the city. And, you know, all, like, reporting requirements for customer service interactions, those are equally applied as well. So, I know that the city has also policies related to that in the city's overall comprehensive plan that might speak more specifically to that.
Well, with respect to that, are you, Councilmember Brown, are you, are you referring to a general discussion of it, or specific to how we do our capital projects, or how we do replacement of facilities, or with respect to how we address new development? Or are you just talking about a broad statement?
Just generally, in terms of the investments that we make, the schedule of maintenance or replacement of needed infrastructure components, I just, you know, I think that it is probably been seen in other places, not in Auburn, of course, but where investments might be made in certain neighborhoods, but not so much in other neighborhoods.
Yeah.
So, that's kind of what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah.
Is that, but, but I'm asking from a policy standpoint, not a specific example or anything.
Yeah, like Tim said, it's not specifically written in there, however, that it is captured throughout all the policies, because with respect to investing in our facilities, a lot of time you are, we are addressing where the need is, and so if there's flooding in a specific area, we need to address that. If there's mains that are old and need to be upsized because they're undersized pipes to fit the stormwater that's reaching that specific area, we capture those or replace those facilities under specific programs. We have multiple storm programs within our capital project funding. We have a replacement program, we have a pipe extension program. So, we do address that when we're, when we're trying to decide what projects to actually complete. However, in general, when it comes to storm in this utility, the, it's really based on need a lot of times, because there's.
Where the water goes.
There may be flooding in a specific area.
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
No problem.
That was kind of a vague sort of thing on such a big topic, but thank you.
Other questions, counsel? All right. Ryan, Tim, thank you very much. All right, we will move on to appointments. Tonight, we have two appointments. The first, and counsel, you will remember that we have an amendment to the Junior City Council. City Council to approve the appointment of Osiris Romero Caldera to the Auburn Junior City Council for a two-year term expiring August 31, 2024. Is there a motion? Deputy Mayor Jay Raj.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to appoint to Junior City Council, Osiris Romero Caldera to a two-year term.
Thank you, is there a second? Councilmember Trout Manuel.
I'll second that, Mayor.
Thank you. Is there any comment, or, or, Councilmember, or, excuse me, Deputy Mayor, do you have any comments that you would like to make?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Osiris Romero Caldera is a very qualified person and would fit into our Junior City Council for a two-year term expiring on August 31, 2024. Thank you.
Questions or comments from counsel? All those in favor of the appointment of Osiris Romero Caldera to the Auburn Junior City Council for a two-year term expiring August 31, 2024, please say aye.
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 All opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Next is the Urban Tree Board. City Council to approve the appointment of Todd Beals to the Urban Tree Board for a three-year term expiring December 31, 2025. Is there a motion? Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I would like to move the appointment of Todd Beals to the Urban Tree Board.
Thank you, is there a second? Councilmember Rakes.
I'll second that, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. We're very lucky to have citizens that are willing to step up for the various needs that we have to make this a livable city, and certainly, urban tree issues are important to all of us. So, we want to thank Todd for his willingness to step up, and I recommend his appointment.
Thank you. Questions or comments? All those in favor of the appointment of Todd Beals to the Urban Tree Board for a three-year term to expire December 31, 2025, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes. All right, we've already had agenda modifications, we will move to public hearings. Tonight, we have a public hearing for the 2024 through 2029 Transportation Improvement Program. Ingrid, is there a staff report?
No staff report tonight. This was discussed with the council at the May 22 council study session, but we're happy to answer any questions if counsel should have some.
Counsel, before I open the public hearing, do you have any questions? All right. I will open the public hearing for the 2024 through 2029 Transportation Improvement Program. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this issue? Is there anyone that would like to speak? Hannah, do we have anyone online?
No, Your Honor, we do not.
All right. All right, I see no one coming forward to provide public comment. We will close the public hearing. All right, we will move to audience participation. This is the place on the agenda where the public is invited to speak to the city council on any issues. Those wishing to speak are reminded to sign in on the form provided, and you can participate in person or submit written comment. Participants can submit written comment via mail, fax, or email. All written comments must be received prior to 5:00 PM on the day of the scheduled meeting, and must be 350 words or less. Please mail written comments to City of Auburn, Attention Sean Campbell, City Clerk, 25 West Main Street, Auburn, Washington, 98001. Please fax written comments to Attention Sean Campbell, City Clerk, at 253-804-3116, or email written comments to publiccomment@auburnwa.gov. If an individual requires an accommodation to allow for remote oral comment because of a difficulty attending a meeting of the governing body, the city requests notice of the need for accommodation by 5:00 PM on the day of the scheduled meeting. Participants can request an accommodation to be able to provide remote oral comment by contacting the city clerk's office in person, by phone at 253-931-3039, or by email to Did we receive any written comment or any need for remote comment tonight?
No, Your Honor.
All right. I will open it to in-person public comment. Is there anyone that would like to provide comment this evening? Please come forward, give your name and address for the record, and please limit comments to three minutes.
Well, first of all, thank you for letting me speak here with you. My name is Robert Bessorti. I have a business here in Auburn that I've operated for about 16 years. I moved it from Kent about 12 years ago.
Your address, please.
Oh, 4422 C Street Northeast in Auburn. The name of the business is Natural Wave. We're a beverage distribution company, and my comment tonight is about the BNO tax that I recently learned about, about a month ago. The tax has been paid. It is combined, of course, with a, or paired with a occupancy tax. And I guess I also sort of have a question to put out there as well. We did a total amount of revenue in the city of Auburn of about $23,000 in 2022. We are being taxed based on the occupancy tax on the equivalency of $1.9 million. And I guess it's a rhetorical question, but I would ask whether you think that's fair to do $23,000 worth of business and be taxed at $1.9 million based on just the size of our warehouse that we occupy? Now, there are a couple of problems with this, more than a couple of problems. Problem number one is that it's not possible to do $1.9 million worth of business in Auburn proportionately with the other, the business that's out there. It's not possible. I mean, we'd need a warehouse 20 times the size. Problem number two is it becomes a matter of double taxation. Lots of cities, other cities have BNO taxes, Seattle, Tacoma, and we, so we, that proportion of business that we're being charged on here in Auburn, we're being taxed as well in these other cities. So, it's double taxation. And problem number three is that it also makes us non-competitive with businesses and warehouses in other cities who don't have such a high tax. City of Puyallup, no BNO tax. City of Renton, they have a BNO tax but no occupancy tax. Sea-Tac, no BNO tax. Federal Way, no tax. Tacoma has a BNO tax but no occupancy tax. Seattle has a BNO tax, but they dropped the occupancy tax in 2016. So, anybody in those cities is at a competitive advantage to us. And, I mean, I can, I can understand how this may seem like a good source of revenue for the city of Auburn now.
Sir, I'm going to need you to wrap up your comments, your three minutes.
Okay, well, let me just say that there's a building right across from us, 127,000 square feet. It's, it's unoccupied. In order for a business to come and occupy that building, they're signing up for $250,000 in taxes over five years.
Sir, I need you to wrap up, please, your three minutes are up.
Well, I'll wrap it up by saying, by asking you the question, I'll leave you with the question, do you think it's fair? I don't think it is.
So, sir, you always have the, I don't know if you've spoken with anyone in our finance department that handles the BNO tax, but you are always welcome to talk with them. They might be able to help you through the process and find areas that will decrease your tax.
I would encourage the city to look at the trend, because I think you're going to find a mass vacancy in Auburn in a couple of years. I really do. Thank you.
Again, I would encourage you to, to contact our finance department to walk through your BNO tax. Sometimes there are ways that you are misreading the form.
I already have.
So, okay.
I already have.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, counsel and mayor. My name is John Brekka. I'm a commercial property owner in downtown Auburn at the address, the city block address of 407-435 East Main Street, and on West Valley Highway Business Park at 3702-3902, West Valley Highway North. I'd like to speak about the latter and in regard to public safety. I just want to make sure the council's aware about a difficult year we've had with break-ins to businesses. Vehicles have always been an issue, but specific spaces, we've had about a dozen breakup, break-ins to spaces up in North Auburn. And I think for the most part, I'll speak for myself, but also other property owners up there, businesses, you might not hear from us. We want to focus on our business, we want to focus on taking care of our properties, but we want to make sure that you know that we are having issues up there. And if you are aware, then you can be empowered to pass policy here at the city of Auburn, make sure that there's adequate budget, and I know that King County and the state of Washington are part of the solution, and I do recognize that Auburn is lobbying, and I continue, I encourage you to keep lobbying the county and state to, so that we have adequate enforcement policies to pair with Auburn's policies and Auburn's budget. We do need your help. I guess, I think this year, we've experienced, in that business park alone, probably $60,000 to $75,000 worth of property dam, you know, property damage, property loss, and that doesn't include the disruption to business that is happening up there. So, I want to make you aware of that, and thank you for what you are doing in Auburn. You have a large task, and each one of you puts countless hours into the city and other committees that you are on for the benefit of Auburn, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Brekka. Anyone else? All right, we will move on. Hannah, do we have any correspondence for this evening?
No, Your Honor, we do not.
All right, we will move to council ad hoc committee reports. Council ad hoc committee chairs may report on the status of their ad hoc council committee's progress on assigned tasks, and may give their recommendations to the city council, if any. We currently have a finance ad hoc committee, which is shared by Councilmember Baldwin, but I do believe that Councilmember Baggett may have the report this evening, is that correct?
That's correct. Thank you, Your Honor. The ad hoc finance committee for the city of Auburn, consisting of council members Kate Baldwin as the chair, and myself as the vice chair, reviewed claims, vouchers, and wire transfers in the amount of $5.4 million dated June 14, 2023, and payroll vouchers in the amount of $2.8 million. twenty-three, and payroll vouchers in the amount of two point eight million dollars for the period of June first to June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. As a result of this review, the committee did not have any questions for the finance department and recommends council approval of these vouchers. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will move to the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered by the city council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. Is there a motion? Deputy Mayor Jay Raj.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, is there a second? Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Your Honor, I second that motion.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Jay Raj.
Thank you, Mayor. Claims and payroll vouchers as described by Finance Vice Chair Robert Baggett and recommended by the Finance Committee. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Questions or comments from council? All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
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 All opposed, please say no. Motion passes. All right, we will move to resolutions. First is resolution number fifty-seven eighteen, a resolution authorizing the mayor to lease a portion of the city's Game Farm Park Administration Building to the Washington State Department of Fish and Wildlife. Is there a motion? Is there a motion? Councilmember Malanga.
I move, Your Honor, that we approve resolution number five seven one eight.
Thank you, is there a second? Councilmember Trout Manuel.
I'll second that, Mayor.
Thank you, councilmember Malanga.
Thank you, Your Honor. Executing this lease will provide the Washington State Department of Fish and Wildlife with a local office, generating revenue for the city, and utilizing an underutilized city building.
Thank you. Questions or comments? All those in favor of resolution fifty-seven eighteen, please say aye.
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 All opposed, please say no. Resolution fifty-seven eighteen passes. Next is resolution fifty-seven twenty, a resolution approving and adopting the twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-nine Transportation Improvement Program of the city of Auburn. Is there a motion? Councilmember Brown.
Yes, Your Honor, I would move adoption of resolution number fifty-seven twenty.
Thank you, is there a second? Deputy Mayor Jay Raj.
I'll second that motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Transportation Improvement Plan, as described in resolution fifty-seven twenty, is a multi-year planning document for the development of transportation facilities within the city. Per RCW thirty-five seventy-seven zero one zero, requires that it be amended by June thirtieth each year.
Thank you. Questions or comments? All those in favor of resolution fifty-seven twenty, please say aye.
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 All opposed, please say no. Resolution fifty-seven twenty passes. Next is resolution fifty-seven twenty-two, a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign the King County Regional Interlocal Agreement, enabling the city to receive its share of the opioid settlement funds. Is there a motion? Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Thank you. I make a motion for to adopt resolution number five seven two two.
Thank you, is there a second? Councilmember Malanga.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Thank you, councilmember Trout Manuel.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number five seven two two approves the King County Interlock Agreement that creates and sets the operational rules for the King County Opium Abatement Council. The Opium Abatement Council oversees the allotment of the funds received through the two opioid settlements negotiated by the state of Washington.
Thank you. Questions or comments? All those in favor of resolution fifty-seven twenty-two, please say aye.
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 All opposed, please say no. Resolution fifty-seven twenty-two passes. Resolution fifty-seven twenty-three, a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign the Pierce County Regional Interlocal Agreement, enabling the city to receive its share of the opioid settlement funds. Is there a motion? Deputy Mayor Jay Raj.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to make a motion to approve resolution number five seven two three.
Thank you, is there a second? Councilmember Trout Manuel.
I'll second that, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Jay Raj.
Thank you, Mayor. This resolution approves the Pierce County Interlocal Agreement that creates and sets the operational rules for Pierce County Opium Abatement Council. The Opium Abatement Council oversees allocation to Pierce County cities of the funds received through the two opioid settlements negotiated by the state of Washington. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Questions or comments? All those in favor of resolution number fifty-seven twenty-three, please say aye.
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 All opposed, please say no. Resolution fifty-seven twenty-three passes. Resolution number fifty-seven twenty-four, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a lease agreement between the city of Auburn and the city of Federal Way for a portion of the city's Game Farm Park Administration Building. Is there a motion? Deputy Mayor Jay Raj.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to make a motion to approve resolution five seven two four.
Thank you, is there a second? Councilmember Rakes.
I'll second that, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Jay Raj.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number five seven two four is a lease for both the city and the Puget Sound Auto Theft Task Force. It provides office space for the task force while also providing revenue to the city and utilizes the non-city staff building. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Questions or comments? All those in favor of resolution number fifty-seven twenty-four, please say aye.
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 All opposed, please say no. Resolution fifty-seven twenty-four passes. All right, we have come to the end of the business portion of the meeting, we will move to mayor and councilmember reports. At this time, the mayor and city council may report on significant items associated with their appointed positions on federal, state, regional, and local organizations. We will begin with Deputy Mayor Jay Raj.
Thank you, Mayor. On June eighteenth, I was at Lesgo Park with the mayor, councilmember Rakes, and councilmember Brown. The weather was kind of iffy, but thanks to our chief DEI officer, Brenda Goodson-Moore, the event was held both indoors and outdoors. It was good to see a variety of African-American cultural vendors and of our own community leaders who were there at the event as well. We must never forget that this is a special federal holiday commemorating the emancipation of our fellow African-Americans who were, continued to be enslaved and by the order of Major General Gordon Granger, proclaiming freedom for the enslaved people in Texas on June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, two and a half years after the Emancipation Proclamation was issued. Next, from June twentieth to the twenty-third, some of us were at the Association of Washington Cities Conference in Spokane with the mayor, councilmember Trout, councilmember Rakes, and councilmember Brown. I attended a number of workshops, mostly they dealt with policy and budgeting. Found it very interesting, learned a few things, and the other thing was, the other good thing that happened was our mayor got appointed to the AWC Regional Representative for Region Thirteen. One other thing before I sign off is just to let the council know that I will be appointing, I will be doing an ad hoc committee for council rules and procedures, but that's to come. I will let you guys know. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Malanga.
Thank you, Your Honor. This last Friday on June twenty-third, I was able to attend Kids' Day at the Community Center. Lots of families, kids were there, and I was there giving out the salute awards for the middle school and elementary school students at IONE for all of their hard work during the school year. We were there in partnership with Dr. Spashadi from the Auburn School District, and it was great fun had by all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Rakes.
On Friday the sixteenth, I attended the Muckle Shoot Veterans Powwow. That was a first for me, so it was really fun, and I really enjoyed the dancing and the costumes. And then, as Deputy Mayor mentioned, I went to Juneteenth and also to the AWC. And then today, on the twenty-sixth, we had our community wellness and dove into some discussions on DEI.
Thank you. Councilmember Trout Manuel.
No report.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown.
Just a short report tonight, Your Honor. Deputy Mayor Jay Raj spoke of the Juneteenth celebration the week prior to that at the farmer's market. We had a pride celebration, as well as a pride flag waving here in Auburn at the city hall. I just want to comment about how much I appreciate our city being a welcoming city and helping to educate us all how we might live together more peacefully and more supportive of each other. I really do appreciate that, and I would also recommend to anybody that's watching this to come visit the farmer's market. It is amazing, it is growing. And I just, we talked to one of the vendors I was with, councilmember Trout Manuel, and this is a, somebody that goes to a lot of the farmer's markets, she said that this was the best market that she'd been to. So, just recommend that to any Auburn resident, get out there on a Sunday, and you'll really have a good time, and there's a lot of good fresh food. Bring some flowers home to your loved ones. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, just a few items. On June sixth through the ninth, I was on...
Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry, councilmember Baggett, my apologies. Do you have a report?
On vacation anyway, but I did want to report that our Regional Transit Committee meeting coming up on July nineteenth will be in-person meeting rather than Zoom, and that will involve a visit to the Metro South Bus Base with a tour of the electric buses' charging station. So, things are moving ahead technology-wise, and look forward to the future. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Baggett, my apologies.
No problem.
And I hope you're enjoying your vacation. All right, back to June sixth through the ninth, I was a member of the trip with the Seattle Chamber of Commerce, the city of Auburn is a member of the Seattle Chamber of Commerce, for their intercity study mission to San Jose and San Francisco as we learned more about affordable housing options and homelessness and substance use disorder. We had the opportunity to meet with Mayor London Breed of San Francisco, who has a similar take on the issues surrounding drugs and drug abuse as we do here, and wants to see more accountability. It was a very refreshing perspective to hear from the mayor of San Francisco. I believe she has lost a loved one to substance use disorder, and we also heard from one of the supervisors, which is what the council members are known as in San Francisco, who is a recovering addict himself and has some very similar views as well, believing in accountability along with compassion and community. So, it was, it was very validating to know that we are not alone in the perspective that we have and the work that Director Hay and his team do for those unsheltered individuals in our community. As was mentioned, Pride at the Market on June eleventh, Brenda Goodson-Moore, Director, Chief Equity Officer, did a fabulous job with ensuring that we were celebrating. I will tell you, with both Pride Month and Juneteenth, we're very proud to report on all of our social media pages, all of the outlets that we have, of how welcoming and encouraging we are and should be in this community. And it saddens me and it angers me that there is, continues to be some hatred in our community. That is something that should not be allowed. While I say we are a welcoming and open community, hate is not allowed in our community, and we will continue to, to work in regard to ensuring that everyone feels welcome and that they belong in this community. And I want to thank Brenda for her efforts also on Juneteenth. And a huge shout-out to Amanda, who helped out, as well as our parks maintenance team, who was right there to ensure that anything that was needed for the indoor-outdoor event was, was available. And we couldn't do any of the events without, let's not forget, the maintenance teams from Public Works as well as Parks Maintenance. They have the thankless job of setting up and taking down after. They don't get a lot of the glory, but they certainly are a big part of why our events are a success. Also want to say congratulations to the fifty-fifth class, the CERT gratification that took place here this past Saturday of community members. There were eighteen members, I believe, who graduated from our CERT training. It's the first one that we've had in the last few years because of COVID, so very excited to see that getting started up again. And with that, we have no reason for an executive or closed session this evening. We are adjourned.